I'd like to call the order, our July council meeting, July 29th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Call the board, please.
Councilman Coles, pass. Councilwoman Phelan?
Here.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Charal? Pass.
Can I pledge allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 27th, 2019 council meeting. One second.
Second.
Second. Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Phelan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
At this time, we'll do public comment on agenda items only, if anybody would like to speak.
You know, since you're the head of finance, accounts of finance?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me how much, or how many dollars have been collected by property tax up till now, and how many has it?
It would be.
He's not here, he's probably still in the meeting.
We don't call the work.
Yeah, but I thought you were the accounts of finance. That falls on you.
Okay.
Since the taxes were being collected from what, April 1st on, how many tax dollars were collected, how many do you think is still out?
Garbage?
No, no, not garbage, public debt.
City taxes. Collected by Westmoreland County for June, seventy-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Year-to-date, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents. And 2019 budget was a hundred thousand dollars. Real estate taxes for June were one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Year-to-date, one million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. One mil- one point, one million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars went to the general fund. Five hundred thousand dollars went to debt services. Two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars went to parks. And fifty thousand dollars went to the library, for a total of two million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
So, how much is in the back now?
As of July, the July 19th?
Yeah.
The general fund has six hundred and forty thousand, thirty-three dollars and eighteen cents. Payroll has five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and forty-three cents. Any grant funds is fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-six cents. Healthcare project, there's nothing there. Debt services is one hundred and eighteen thousand, twenty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Parks and Recreation has two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred, two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Line usage has two hundred and fifty-six thousand, fifty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. The healthcare fund has ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-six. And...
Look, if this line, you can use it, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's supposed to be coming from what we pay every month, you get a check, so you should be mixing that with the mortgage.
It all goes in...
Yeah, it goes all in the general fund, but that has nothing to do with...
I thought through.
Mayor, would you, please, one at a time, okay?
Okay. One thing that could put this to bed right now, and unfortunately, it won't happen tonight, and I apologize because the auditors were having difficulty, but they had a prior engagement because they were going to do their report, okay?
They did do it, yeah.
Well, they could not make it tonight due to a prior scheduling conflict. That will be next month, is it the end of the month?
This month.
Yes, it is the end of the month?
This month.
No, I'm... And they will have a complete report of all findings where and of interest, the line usage will spell out exactly what's going on. What has happened? You will have it exactly from them. Again, I apologize for everybody that might have been looking for it tonight, but they had a scheduling conflict and they couldn't do it.
So, right now, you're comfortably sitting on what, four hundred and fifty thousand?
We're sitting on six hundred thousand, but of course, that's minus payroll, that is minus...
Yeah, payroll and all that, so what would that bring it down to?
Well, payroll was roughly, June, fifty-some thousand a month?
Yeah.
So...
Oh, no.
Okay, so...
Twice a month.
Twice a month, so you're talking...
This month it is.
Hundred thousand dollars a month?
A hundred and three thousand.
For the whole month?
Correct, they're running two phases.
Hundred and three thousand, ninety-six dollars and ninety-two cents, which we have approved for. So, we have to the rest of the year, be very cautious, and hope to spend our money.
Now, out of the school taxes, we'd be picking up in the fall.
Why would we, why would we pick up?
No, no, I, you don't get a percentage?
Uh-huh. That's just, they are, our employees are paid a percentage of the school district to collect those taxes, am I correct?
How much is that percentage?
I'm sorry?
Do you know how much the percentage is?
I think it's a third, 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 we pay a third, the school district pays a third, and the county pays a third. I believe that's how it works.
What's the latest on these, two vehicles, like, what's the deal?
They were ordered by Sea Harbor back in about...
Morning?
No. No, we didn't come through with all that until May. They were ordered right after that, I think they were ordered in the middle of June, they were ordered, and they said they'd do at least till late September. Because apparently, from what I understand, they're not a production company, Ford, like GM, when they run the production run for emergency vehicles, whatever it is, they block time in their production schedule, and maybe run, you know, a couple hundred thousand of what they do, or whatever they're rolling along. But when they do come in, they have to be specked out, if everything the chief smith wanted. The bars have to be on, Councilman Phelan will be helping facilitate that, making sure the correct things are there. We have...
Has everything been paid up front, or you still...
We've got the money.
We have the money, but you didn't pay them yet?
No, not to deliver. And everything will be there besides two Panasonic toughbooks, cradles, the software for the police to be able to pull over vehicles and not have to call in for dispatch. And we're also looking to have them have cameras, so they can do and check license plates. So they will be totally, two fully, they're forty-seven, five each? Lot of ambulances, but it's still expensive. No, we were able to do them under the hundred thousand dollars, and we still have, like Drake, you have about six thousand dollars left on? We have about six thousand dollars left, hopefully we can recoup that from the county in that Westmoreland County, what do I call them? That group, what is that group?
Westmoreland, we need any foundation of Westmoreland County.
Yes, we're going to ask for that ten percent we held back, and we're originally going to get the police vehicles that are electric, and we're hoping to put that towards some of the other amenities for police vehicles.
Okay. All right, I'll ask other questions.
Is anybody else for public comment?
I guess.
Martin Dudes, 32 Shaw Drive, M. S. N. County. I just, we have a motion to approve the sale of city-owned lots of interested individuals for a cost of four, four hundred dollars per parcel, with the city preparing the necessary deed and various documents of sale as required. Do you have a list of parcels, will they be advertised?
We have a list of, these are the repository properties the city's been acquiring, intention is for it to be a side lot program. So, they're working out, if, when, I mean, there's four hundred properties, that has to be issued later. So, they likely will have to be advertised, so people know they're available. We're not, we're not selling any specific properties, just authorizing duty to get the ball rolling on that process.
And you'll come back with details?
What these are, there's, there's four hundred or so properties, right, Davey? Yeah, they're repository properties, they were purchased from the Westmoreland County repository. A lot of them are vacant now because the city demoed the houses on them. The intention of this is to be like a vacant side lot program, where yours will be extended once you take ownership of that property.
I guess the perception looking there, it looks like we're already selling lots to four hundred of them?
No, I'm just, no, I didn't think that.
You want to buy some?
Yeah. But that's all it is, is side lots?
Yeah.
No other lots that...
I mean, if somebody wants to buy a half demolished house, so be it, but liabilities on whoever wants to buy, most of these are vacant lots.
And I understand that, but I'm just saying that is one of the criteria that you have to live next to a vacant lot to get that vacant lot.
He's asking if he can buy one, if somebody can buy one.
Not, not necessarily.
Okay, well, how about if you have two individuals that want to stay in luck, then we...
Probably the highest bidder.
Again, what procedure, what you do, is it an actual bidding process, or...
Yeah, it's exactly what it'd be, it'd be a sealed bidding process, and that occasionally keep it fair for everybody. This, this is just in its infancy, essentially what we're getting at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My house has been burnt for a long time, and Mrs. Johnson died in that house, and I was just wondering if they could have noticed on birds that come to the meeting about it, and may go to demo it out.
It's on, there was, there was supposed to be a demo hearing last Thursday, where one of the council people had a family member die, couldn't be here, so there wasn't a court. That demo hearing is going to be rescheduled till, until September. So you have to, we have to give the property owners another thirty days' notice to readvertise, go through the process again. So it's still on the CDP demo list.
Okay. All right, thank you. Two of them.
Can I just, I'm sorry? Sure, we'll just add to the question, those, those lots will be cleared in three, three weeks?
Yes, yes. There were, there was an issue that there were still taxes on the lots last year, that has been taken care of. The county, I believe the county voted to exonerate their portion of the taxes this past month, there was, their meeting coming up here relatively soon.
The city and the school district?
They all took action to exonerate all those taxes.
Anyone else? An update on the status of the comprehensive plan by Mr. James Proton of Mac and Engineering. Mr. Proton provided to make it tonight, but I have an update here, I'd like to take a minute or two to read to everybody. This is a summary of where the comprehensive plan is as of July 18th, 2019. A second public meeting was held in May. Flight inventory and mapping project was completed by Westmoreland County as part of the plan, if anybody would like to take a look at that. There are actually printouts right here, from Westmoreland County. Goals were drafted, and the strategies presented to the advisory committee for review and comment in June. These goals and strategies reflect the input and receipt from the advisory committee and public today. A web page and a Facebook page was, Facebook page was launched. Stakeholders are being reviewed as part of the, interviewed as part of the plan. And there is an upcoming meeting scheduled for Wednesday, August 7th, from 2:00 to 7:00 PM at the Douglas Education Center, 30 Donner Avenue. The purpose of this plan is to have attendees rank their top goals that the city and the plan will need to discuss on. The ranking exercise will be made available online after the public meeting for anyone who is unable to attend. Priority goals will be identified, and corresponding focus groups will be conveyed to discuss possibility, possible early implementation projects and items. In conjunction with council and the solicitor, the team will begin the funding process for agreed-upon implementation projects. They're also, we're preparing a scope for services for the study of 500 Donner building, prior to any type of project being funded, demolition or otherwise, a study is required. And there will be looking to, they're actually looking to do a conceptual rendering of what the potential future development of the 500 block of Donner may look like. If anybody would like to see this, they're on the...
Tony, I want to throw it on the website later tonight, please.
Thank you. Okay. Treasurers' report, I guess I, was that? Oh, I found it. There'll be a presentation, Kristen Joseph and Menneson Rock Trail Rotary, present information on the third annual five-kid walk for the board to... Is this the zombie?
It is.
Oh, God, I apologize.
I have the printouts, I'm not sure if you guys have them.
Thank you.
Whoever, they're on such a... Thank you. So, it's just listed on there, we have scheduled for the third annual zombie run on October 19th, 2019. We usually use the park area, starts at 7:30, and we're usually out of there by noon. The fire department is on board again this year to help close down the streets. We started the park at Don Peranny, and then back, so there's a little portion of Grand Boulevard that also is, will need closed down. A lot of the money that we use, we help to fund the school, the elementary center particularly. We usually give out school supplies to each homeroom. This year, we're actually going to do sporting equipment because of the, the recent, they cut out the gym teacher, so the teachers have to buy all of their own sporting equipment. So, we're going to help, help the teachers with that. So, each homeroom will get their own set of sporting equipment, so, and then we do scholarships for the high school as well. So that's what we hope to fund with this, this race. So last year, we had about a hundred participants, the Douglas Education Center, they, they come up and do face painting, zombie makeup, you see, there's just some pictures on there from the valley from last year, so, any questions?
No, no questions about this, it just blows my mind that they, stuff, that they didn't buy.
Yeah, so we've been doing the school supplies, I think, two years now. We would hand-deliver a tote to each homeroom, but my sister's a teacher, and my cousin as well, and they just, said they have a lot of stuff left over, so we're trying to still keep our funding to help them out, just in an area of what they need. So, we try to keep it within the community, so, that's it. All right, thanks, Beth.
Okay. Treasury report, Jerry unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. I'll get half of this with Ernie, we'll all go back over it. Garbage revenues fees, current for the month of June, two thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars, year-to-date, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. 2019 budget was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Delinquent garbage, June is two thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and four cents, year-to-date is fifty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-one cents, and the budgeted amount is two hundred and three thousand. Garbage for the housing authority, year-to-date was fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, the budgeted amount is sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Total garbage collected for 20, I should say, oh, no, it's 2020, already something paid, four hundred and ten dollars and thirty-five cents. City revenues, debt taxes, current for June, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-one cents, year-to-date, one million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. And out of that, the general fund received one million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Debt services, about five hundred thousand dollars. Parks, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Library, fifty thousand, for a total of two million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Delinquent city taxes, year-to-date, 2019, were eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents, and the budget amount was a thousand dollars. City taxes collected by Westmoreland County Tax Bureau, in June, seventy-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Year-to-date, ninety, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents, and 2019 budget was a hundred thousand dollars. Total year-to-date taxes is two million, seventy-three dollars, seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and seven cents. Police report for the month of June, ready your motion on? Have a motion to approve the tax collector's report as, as presented.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Phelan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
If anybody would like to see the police report, I have a copy over here, somewhere. Parking meter receipts, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-one cents, parking fines and forfeitures, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Parking permits, one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Dissonious collections, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Court receipts from district justice offices, two thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Total receipts collected for June, six thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety cents. I'd like to make a motion to enter into demolition fund agreement, demo 19-04, with the county of Westmoreland for Act 152, county-wide demolition project funds awarded to the city in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, with the redevelopment authority of the county of Westmoreland providing project delivery services for demolition and remediation of the property at 612 to 614 McKee Avenue, Menneson, with the project to be completed by June 1st, 2020.
What was the address again?
612 to 614 McKee.
You always add an N to the end of it, you know?
One second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Phelan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve a municipal, municipal winter traffic services agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Transportation, for snow removal services at various state roads, with the city to be compensated in the appropriate, approximate amount of eighteen thousand, eighty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, plus additional severe winter adjustments. One second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Phelan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
So if it doesn't snow, we still get the eighteen thousand?
Oh, yeah.
I just need to make sure there's no category on that.
That part we get, we just don't get the adjustment.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 13 of 2019, approving the Act 44 process of the selection of the Huntington National Bank as the successor to Relyant Asset Management for management of the assets of the police and firemen's pension plans for the city of Menneson.
Second.
For the second, questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Phelan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the procedure for sale of city-owned lots for interested individuals for the cost of four hundred dollars per parcel, with the city preparing the necessary deeds and various documents of sale as required.
Can we change that a little bit? Doc brings up a good thing, I don't like the verdict on that thing. We'd like, motion to approve going forward with creating the procedure to sell these four hundred lots?
To simplify, motion to approve creating the procedure, not finalizing the procedure.
Something better than it is.
Councilwoman Phelan, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for the new verdict.
So we need to detract what we just said.
Motion to approve the finalization of the procedure.
Do we have to take a motion to not? I read it already.
The motion, Dave's motion will be a motion to amend the motion.
So we have a motion to approve, to amend the motion that Dave spoke of. Good enough?
This is complicated. I didn't write it.
One second?
Second.
Okay, the motion we're voting on is the motion to amend?
Correct.
Okay, not to pass it right now, just to amend it. And I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Lo...
Councilwoman Phelan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Thanks. Motion to, motion to accept the resignation, right?
We got a vote on Dave's motion as amended.
I want to make a motion to approve Dave's motion as amended. No?
Second.
Thank you.
Do I still put those votes in?
Yes.
Sorry, everybody, we had to change some...
Could you read that motion then, the back of the motion?
No. It's Phelan's problem.
From now on, we're going to call it a motion. Pain in the butt, really.
You have the...
We have the...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Still need to read it?
Yep.
Motion to approve the finalization of the procedure for the sale of city-owned lots to interested individuals for a cost of four hundred dollars per parcel, with the city preparing the necessary deeds and various documents of sale as required.
See, they read that.
So you had to do this for the board to finalize?
Just that's it.
Councilwoman Phelan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to accept the resignation of Melissa Lukovich from her position as a meter enforcement officer, only.
Second.
Second, questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Phelan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Josh Turkovich to the City of Menneson Planning Commission, to a three-year term retroactive to January 1st, 2019, to expire December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Second, questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Phelan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
A motion to approve, appoint, I'm sorry, Gregory Davis to the City of Menneson Planning Commission, to a two-year retroactive to January 1st, 2019, to expire December 31st, 2020.
Second.
Second, questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Phelan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Request of the Menneson Lions Club to use the Herman Mikulich boat-launched Pavilion on Thursday, August 15th, 2019, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM for their annual state run.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Yeah, yeah, do people charge them, too? Was it first?
Mm-hmm.
It's a hundred dollars.
Everybody...
It's a hundred dollars, and then it's five hundred dollars for the city, uh, division?
No, it's three hundred.
Three hundred.
For the antipathy, you mean, the antipathy.
Shouldn't the bill be just the same amount of money, otherwise, it's so much cheaper?
I guess it's a different facility.
You're running, clean up electric?
Pavilion, Ernie, it's just a pavilion. They're not renting the docks.
The docks aren't even operational?
It's, the docks are always operational, I mean, they're in the water.
Okay.
Anybody can use them, they're public.
They're not gonna...
You can go put a boat in there and put it in the water.
Liver at all, having all this?
It's for the pavilion, where there's little trashcans, and there's bathroom with public access, anybody can use the bathroom.
Okay, so when we go by, ten o'clock at night, there's no garbage to litter on the ground?
Street crew cleans that up, right?
Lions does a pretty good job.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. We're gonna start again today?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to enter into a staffing agreement with Staff Fusion for the temporary contract staffing associate to work a maximum of twenty hours per week for an agency cost of twenty-two dollars and forty cents per hour. You have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Excuse me, can you explain that last... What's that for you?
It's a temporary employee from a tenth agency. Okay, that's why there's twenty-two forty now. For a period of what? Twelve weeks, I think.
Who's that person gonna help?
You. Me, too. Yes, she will...
Really?
Help you. I sure do.
Okay. Motion to accept the bid from Cynthia M. Cabali Akurdi in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-one cents to purchase the property at four fifteen Parthenie Boulevard, tax ID number twenty dash oh-two dash oh-eight dash zero dash seventy-six from the unsold property repository. You have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
An explanation. This is from the county repository.
Can you put that in there?
No, it's fine.
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve to hire a part-time assistant to the code enforcement officer for an hourly rate of nine dollars an hour.
Second.
Second. Questions on the motion?
What was on that?
Ernie, this was a question to us, a motion, not you. You can comment on this if you please. No, I'm sorry, you'll have to wait till the other... But thank you.
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. If anybody would like to see the library board financial report for the month ending in June, two thousand and nineteen, I have that. I'd like to make a motion to approve transfer of the real estate tax funds collected from June first through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, to the following funds. General Fund, eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Debt Service Fund, twenty-eight thousand, seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents. Parks and Recreation Fund, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-five cents. And the Library Fund, two thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Bye, Davey.
Thank you. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
A motion to approve transfer of delinquent real estate tax funds collected from June first through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, to the following funds. The General Fund is forty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Debt Service Fund is fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Parks and Recreation Fund, seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. And the Library Fund, one thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. You have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to Macon Engineering Company for invoice number four-six-nine-three-seven for services in May, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents for the Menneson Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Thank you. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve change order number one in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars for additional stone to repair inlet one dash thirteen and concrete curb work to repair severely damaged curb at fourteen thirty-six Jones Street, adjacent to inlet one dash seventeen of the citywide inlet repair project, Phase One. Construction group number one according to the recommendation of W.C. Inc., be paid out of line usage fee.
Second.
No questions. Second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payments to Morak Excavation Inc. for the invoice number one, partial, including change order number one in a total amount of forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars for the citywide inlet repair project, Phase One, construction group number one, according to the recommendation of W.C. Inc., to be paid out of line usage fee.
Second.
You have a second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to Morak Excavation Inc. for invoice number two, partial, in the amount of five thousand, one hundred dollars for inlet one dash three. Attention, addition to construction group number one, citywide inlet repair project, Phase One, according to the recommendations of W.C. Inc., be paid out of line usage fee.
Second.
Second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to Morak Excavation Inc. for invoice number two, final, in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars for the Third Street Drainage Repair Project, according to the recommendation of W.C. Inc., be paid out of line usage fee.
Second.
Second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to W.C. Inc. in the amount of two hundred and thirty dollars for professional services for construction management for the Tenth and McMahon Sidewalk Repair to be paid out of line usage fee.
Second.
You have a second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to W.C. Inc. in the amount of four hundred and twenty dollars for professional services for contractor paving coordination and consulting for the Dale Avenue Pavement Repair to be paid out of line usage fee.
Second.
You have a second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to W.C. Inc. in the amount of five hundred and twenty dollars for professional services for construction management and observation for the Two Seventy-Nine Scootamaker Avenue Emergency Demolition and Site Clearance Project to be paid out of the general fund.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to W.C. Inc. in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for professional services for construction management and observation for the two thousand and eighteen Menneson Downtown Demolition and Site Clearance Project in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars to be paid out of the capital improvements fund. You have a second?
Second.
Second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to Morak Excavation Inc. for invoice number one, final, in the amount of nine hundred and fifteen dollars or...
Two cents.
Or, okay. Or the Third Street Drainage Repair Channel Extension Project according to recommendation of W.C. Inc., to be paid out of line usage fee.
Second.
You have a second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to New Coat Paving and Sealing Company in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars for the Dale Avenue Pavement Repair Project, according to the recommendation of W.C. Inc., to be paid out of line usage fee. Oops. Okay, okay. You have a second? Thank you. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to the Ward Building and Highway Specialties, Inc. for invoice number one in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars for the installation of a guardrail in the alley for demolition buildings on Donner Avenue.
Second.
You have a second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to Stash Trucking for the remainder of invoice number three, partial, in the amount of six thousand, five hundred dollars for the Two Seventy-Nine Scootamaker Avenue Demolition and Site Clearance Project according to the recommendation of W.C. Inc., to be paid out of the Economic and Community Development Initiative Plan.
Second.
Question on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to Nova Casualty Company for invoice number eighteen dash zero four two-two-two-eight in the amount of two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents for the insurance policy number one of thirty-six oh-one deductible expenses.
Second.
Second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to issue refund to On-Site Rep LLC for real estate taxes paid in two thousand and eighteen that were subsequently reduced due to the lower property assessment.
Second.
Second. Question on the motion?
What's it, huh?
Yeah.
You better just get junk out soon.
Pretty soon. Table it until next one. It's in your song. You wanna do that, just table it the next one?
Yeah.
You have two motions.
Like to make a motion to table the previous one until we get the...
The amount.
The amount. Till we table it till first meeting, you know?
You have a second?
Second. Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to issue refund to Portnoy Law Associates Limited in the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Can we keep that? Just second. Second.
I didn't finish it.
We wanna keep it, though, we wanna keep it.
Oh, you wanna keep it?
Yes. There an error, what can we say?
Okay. Finish it. To the city in air. Motion?
Councilman Finn?
She has a...
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
No more missing meetings. This is killing us. Motion to approve payment for Software Systems, Inc. for invoice number one-three-one-seven-two in the amount of one thousand, five hundred dollars for data conversion services for the ability to multi-link software.
Multi-link.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My second.
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Thank God. Councilwoman Thomas?
Call it what's been a long time, but they're available to you in the street and parks if you need to look at it. It's available to you if you wanna look at the streets and the parks. You just request it from Judy.
That is too easy.
Yeah.
I wanna know what's up with that. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Finn?
Hey, everybody, long time. Got Code Office financials for the month of June... For, yeah, June tw- twenty nineteen. And the Code Office report for the month of June twenty nineteen, along with the fire report. In June, Menneson Firefighters devoted until three hundred and forty-one man-hours to safety and well-being of the city and surrounding communities. Thank you all very much, I appreciate it, especially today. They helped coordinate down at the power outage thing. E-mail report for June twenty nineteen. Emergency calls, one hundred and thirteen. Fire standbys were ten. Public service calls were five, for a total of a hundred and twenty-eight. I have Civic Center Rec Board report for the month of June, if you want to see it, you will have it. And I just wanted to brief on the next two motions. This isn't to, like, hire these people for full-time. We already, we contract out for pest control, wildlife control, you know, to get the raccoons that have been plaguing some of the city. But I guess the company that we use right now is just really busy. So this is just to add these two other companies to the call list, basically. So we can, we'll have three companies that we can call and pull from. So the first one is a motion to approve to contract Pittsburgh Wildlife Control for the trapping and removal of problematic wildlife as permitted by the Pennsylvania Game Commission for properties in the city of Menneson for a cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars to set up two, three traps, and a cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars to check traps and dispose of them.
Second.
You have a second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
And the second one is a motion to approve the contract for wildlife pest control services for the trapping and removal of problematic wildlife as permitted by the Pennsylvania Game Commission for properties in the city of Menneson for a cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour to set up traps, a cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars for animal removal, and a cost of a hundred and fifty dollars for a lost or stolen trap.
Second.
You have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Dean.
You're welcome. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Counselor? Your report. Lane is not here. Motion to approve payment of bills for expenditures from the General Fund, Parks Fund, Recreation Board, Line Usage Fund pending review by the Director of Accounts and Finance and City Control. Second.
Second.
Second. Questions on the motion?
Councilor Dean?
Hi.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve electronic transfers from the General Fund to the Payroll Fund for payroll for July two thousand nineteen in the amount of three hundred and three thousand ninety-six dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
Your second. Questions on the motion?
Councilor Dean?
Hi.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve electronic transfers from the General Fund to the healthcare account for healthcare expenditures for the month of July two thousand nineteen in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Your second. Questions on the motion?
Councilor Dean?
Hi.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of Menneson Public Library Fund contribution in July two thousand nineteen in the amount of four thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilor Dean?
Hi.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion to advertise for a mechanical maintenance services contract for the generator at the Public Safety Bank.
Second.
Your second. Questions on the motion?
That's to advertise for somebody to do just monthly and yearly services?
Yeah, get a service contract for the generator.
Just some backstory. I guess it was bought seven years ago and there was no service agreement with it. So it didn't exactly start correctly today. I'll send you down.
You did?
Oh, she did? Lois seconded it. I did.
Councilor Dean?
Hi.
Councilor Orzachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, we have public comment on non-genius items.
Tony, if you don't mind, I got a bad left wheel tonight. Can I just ask from here?
Yeah.
The one, the one thing that stood out was the doorbell. It says behind the building over here to the corner. What was that payed out? It said invoice number one, amount three thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars for insulation doorbell behind the demolished building from long ago.
That's out of the general fund.
Out of the general fund. The other, the other question was the position for Judy's assistant or help, temp help. Is that Carla's position?
No.
Okay.
It's not Carla's position.
Thank you.
Carla's position is going to be moved by a full-time person in accordance to the union contract.
Thank you. And that's been advertised for
Yes, it's been advertised a couple times.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's been advertised a couple times.
Thank you. That's all, huh?
Love your tone there.
Anybody else?
Who signed off on this contract to do the roads?
Nobody. That's a state project.
It's a state project?
You have nothing to do with it.
Okay.
You're talking Donner's good, you're right.
Yeah.
Because when it rains, many times, it's big puddles of water everywhere.
There's a river.
I know, but I just can't believe that when they put the top layer on, everything's going to go away. I just don't see that.
And Pendott did the engineering? Who Pendott contracted out?
And it's all uneven, too.
Why Pendott is responsible for the project? I have personally made four, five, or six phone calls to Pendott's district office and then what's going to launch?
You know, the library got flooded, okay? And when they put that new top finished layer, it's going to be even with the sidewalks here. That means all the runoff is going continuously going to the library. Right now, there's only one inch left. So you guys are going to end up paying more and more money and nobody's supervising anything. You know, when I got a contract at my house, I'm on top of it. I don't see nobody walking around to see if anybody's doing the job right or if they're addressing all the issues.
Okay, Ernie, I don't disagree with you, but it is Pendott.
Okay, but it's your time, too. Because of Pendott, you know, it's like somebody said, oh, the feds, let's give whatever the feds want. And I don't bow down to authority. I bow down to responsibility.
I can talk to them to a wheel in my face. I can give you names. The Pendott District Superintendent, who I've talked to many times.
All I know is that when they put that extra inch and a half of that blacktop on top, that means all the water on that donut is going to go right into the library.
Well, I'm hoping and assuming that all the inlets and the rip-up the water lines and the service lines is going to take care of that.
But if they, Ernie, if they screw something up and it floods the library, that's on the state.
Well, you know what they did? What did the state do? You know what they did? They did for three hours, I mean, for three days, he had, what do you call it? Fans here and all that to dry it up because they told him to dry all the carpet. He would come in and this is all expensive.
Then that would have to be filed with Pendott to recop, to file claim.
When did this happen?
Last week. It's like all these puddles of water is going around. I mean, big puddles of water. When I'm talking one inch, I'm talking maybe six inches deep.
It was a, it was a monumental downpour. Everybody got that unfortunately, and it's very sad about people without
It happens more than once.
Well, that's Mother Nature. We can't control
Well, if you're forking millions of dollars, you better have some antidote for Mother Nature. You don't just throw your arms at Mother Nature.
The city's not forking millions of dollars. You as a taxpayer own for that project.
That's right. That's right. We're just supposed to be representing our interests, too.
Not on a state level, I think.
Why not? If, if, if the state's in your backyard, you have a right to see what's going on and to correct them if they're doing something wrong.
The library would need to file a claim with Pendott
Exactly.
to recoup those
Which is what I just said.
So it's through his own then. Okay, we don't got representative
No, but you're the responsibility yourself, Ernie. I wasn't here when it was poor torrential downpour.
Okay, first of all, I'm not talking to you and I don't want to talk to you because you keep biting in and I, I didn't address
Because you don't want to hear what I had to say because I proved you wrong every time.
What are you going to say?
Let's be simple. I have made phone calls to Pendott. I continue to make phone calls to Pendott.
Just give Ernie the number.
Push back seriously. Yeah, I can give you Lenny Kavitsa, and Lenny Kavitsa is the District Superintendent for Pendott in Washington because that's where this project comes out. And I'll be honest with you. You give me your number, I will give you and call you this, I have it at work.
Yeah.
And I will call it to you if you have it. I'll give it to you and maybe you'll have a better chance because I've left four phone calls for him and he's returned absolutely better.
They didn't even come down no one time until I called them on the news. They just, they, they, their stuff doesn't stay.
You can't sue Pendott. You can't sue Pendott.
You can sue the contractor.
The contractor was with, the contract is with Pendott. So you can't sue the contractor. You've got to sue Pendott, and by law, Pendott is Teflon. You cannot sue them in the state of Pennsylvania. I'm not saying it's right. I'm not saying it's wrong. Ernie, I'll be honest with you. All of us in this room, everybody lives in the city, I've asked countless times why Donner isn't done. It's been eighty, ninety degrees out, okay?
And they wrecked all these businesses, too.
Again, ask them all. Why can't you get down with a paper and just go? I asked them to the point and we brought it up to Pendott and saying, look, I've talked to businesses to say, shut Donner down at night, for two nights. Shut it down completely.
Why don't you guys organize a demonstration? We sit down there for an hour.
If you want to get anything from Pendott, call them and then call the radio, I mean, call the news station.
Yes, if, if somebody with authority ain't talking or leading the way, they ignore you, okay?
Then they're ignoring you.
Okay. But then let's get to the sub-issue. And so far, how much money did you spend there, Seamus, to get, how much money did you collect so far from delinquencies?
Or, I'm sorry, which one?
All the delinquencies. You started back in the springtime. And you said you're going to take these people to the magistrate. How much money did you spend there to get the magistrate, in the faith of word?
To be honest?
How much came in? How much came in? I want to see what's fruit for.
To be honest, we haven't had very many magistrate hearings at all. I think over seven months in, I've been in the magistrate's office twice. So Marvin's been doing a pretty good job.
How much money came in there?
On the report, it was wrapped for you.
There's a report I read.
I don't have it in front of me.
It actually got rid in place. Delinquent. Year-to-date, fifty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Fifty-six thousand. Did they collect the fifty-six thousand?
That's what was collected.
In the bank.
How, how much is still on?
Butted in for two hundred K of the delinquent.
So what, we're back in that, what, twenty-four, five percent?
We were back to zero.
Yeah, I know, but we're for twenty-five percent. So I'm asking, who said this? What are you going to do to bridge that gap? Twenty-five percent to what? Even fifty percent on behalf?
We still got about half a year left, so.
No, you don't. You already got four months and you guys are cruising into the next January administration. You guys are all cruising. You're concerned, being missing meetings, sorry to treasure, you know? Now, there's something else, too. Back in the springtime, the ex-mayor got jumped in ugly. We're going to bring two hundred employees. The Indians going to be doing this and this and that. Now, I called up the TRIP review, the TRIP.
You're getting closer to that one.
Okay. The TRIP review told me back in March, after that incident, that he got legal issues and financial issues and he has till July thirty-first, which is tomorrow.
It's two days from now, actually.
Okay. And the way it looks like, we're holding a white elephant in abdulthood. We're not going to get nothing from this guy. That's all I know. And I want to know what will be then your course of action. And two years have gone by, you haven't collected one dollar on property and school taxes. All you collected was his interest. So what are you guys going to do about that?
We'll deal with it if
We're going to deal with it what? You told me back in the spring?
Well, Ernie, you're, you're making me predict the future here, if and when something should happen and hasn't happened yet.
Well, it's going to happen in a couple of days.
Maybe it won't.
No, you want to bet? Okay, let's put, let's put money.
I'm going to call you, Ernie.
It's for money because you guys always deny when I'm bringing it up, all the time.
We don't deny. We prove you wrong, Ernie. Ninety-nine percent of everything that comes out of your mouth.
You want to put money down there? I bet he defaults?
It's illegal to gamble.
No gambling.
I mean, look, if something
Buy me a meal then.
I got you smiling. You're not yelling at me anymore.
Okay, you going to buy me a meal? Will it default?
It's better.
Okay, you can take him in the next, next week.
I'm going to buy you a chair.
Ernie, Ernie, can I have a minute of your glory?
Yeah, go ahead.
One thing that Ernie's saying that is something that has always troubled me. This city has fought very hard in the, in the Indian guy's favor. I don't mean to call him an Indian guy. I don't even
Well, he is an Indian. He was born and he got an Indian passport.
Well, it's still rude to call him.
No, it ain't rude. That, that political correctness has gone too far.
Can you let him talk?
Okay, but I don't like
My question is, is something that Chris touched on earlier. The school district's cutting things, cutting gym teachers. We don't, we can't even provide basic services to our children. The school district fought very hard to drop the taxes on this building. This, I believe, were you involved, Joe, when you went to Greensburg? And you fought to lower the man's taxes substantially.
All right. I'll rehash this again. I'm going to begin. Bought the building for two forty-nine, something like that. There were appraisals. The school district, now, that's the price the city purchased it, fair market value of a property when it's sold, that's substantial evidence to how much that building's worth, okay? So for me to go out and get a five thousand dollar appraisal, to litigate that, now, I was bystander at the court proceeding. You still had to be there. The school district went out and got their appraisal, which ended up and it was four thirty-five, the total purchase price. Their appraiser, independent, I think it was, might have been Lincoln Alley. I don't remember it off the top of my head. The fair market value of that appraisal ended up being four hundred and thirty-five dollars, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It was a wasted effort. Overall, it was a complete waste of effort to fight that tax appeal appraisal. Now, there was another appraisal from a couple of years ago done by CBRE. It was a juice appraisal. It didn't account for the H vac unit being entirely replaced.
Didn't use comps from Pittsburgh?
They used comps that were outrageous. I'd have walked into the courtroom with that and held weight.
My, my fear is, Joe, is that since this has happened, how many businesses in town have went to Greensburg for an appeal to have their taxes? We knew this would happen. We knew it would open the door for future drops in taxes.
I haven't seen any. I've seen residential, for sure. I haven't seen any commercial properties other than the building the city sold. You got to keep in mind that building was owned by a nonprofit since nineteen seventy-five. That assessment didn't change for how many ever years that was.
So there are no taxes?
Correct.
Is there still no taxes?
That, that's, it's a taxable entity now. They are paying real estate taxes.
They haven't paid anything yet.
True.
They paid the taxes. How much money did he pay?
That's completely different from real estate taxes and what he goes for to the inquiry.
Is there anything that you can show publicly that the man has paid taxes?
No.
Public record, the receipts from the treasure.
We're not talking interest.
No, he's up to date.
No, you're, you're talking, you're talking about the purchase price. I'm talking about taxes.
Right.
He paid the interest on the purchase price. He hasn't paid a principal yet, has he?
He had a down payment. The principal's due in September.
In September.
Ninety-five thousand.
But my, my chime in on this was, was the nervousness of, and I've heard that several businesses have been lowered, okay?
Then I'm not, we're not getting notices of it from the county.
But my fear is, is that what's stopping every business now?
I thought for him, it's all there is.
If, if that happened, the city's not getting the notices from the county for tax appeals.
So my ne, my next question, well, by George, I heard by George. Is that true or is it not true? But don't, but don't get me wrong. If these, if these business owners are getting their taxes lowered, good for them, I guess. But this is, this is the door I feared being opened, is that if we opened it for one, we're all going to step up and say, you know what? Maybe I shouldn't pay the twenty-eight hundred or whatever I pay on my home. Maybe it should only be fourteen hundred.
And I said before, take a tax appeal to
But again, you as leaders now, what do you do to try to stop this, this door from being
If there's businesses filing for tax appeals and for whatever reason I'm not seeing them or the city's not seeing them, it's an issue I can look into.
Well, you should because that affects your bottom line.
I understand that, too. But even more worrisome is the school district. They're a bigger chunk of these tax appeals. Like, I represent school districts, too. That's all I do for a lot of my time is go to tax appeal for the school districts. I don't know why your school district isn't taking out, helping these tax appeals. The city can look into that. I'm telling you, it's expensive. It's just a tax appeal hearing today for a school district, a trial. The third time I've been up there. So I spent twenty-four hours in court alone. That's not preparing. It's not doing the legal research. It's sitting in a courtroom. It's slippery slope.
Mr. Delfonse, you didn't pay ninety-five thousand dollars a year. So you got to earn that. Okay, so don't be telling us that you spent twenty-four hours one time, okay?
By the way, I'm done. Thanks. Is Ernie, you done?
I think three minutes.
Just one last question. Would you ever be doing anything about these eight businesses on the riverbank?
Maybe.
Maybe. So you're going to let another year go by where they're just paying forty-five commercial acres, ten thousand four hundred dollars, when they used to pay a hundred and eighty-four thousand?
Thanks, Ernie.
Judge Gori, fifteen, fifty-six, Marion Avenue. I have two questions. Both in a second. Okay, roughly, you spent between fifty-five, sixty thousand and out of the line usage rate. Does someone tell me what the balance is then? Is it in that?
No. Yeah, you weren't here earlier. We
Two hundred and sixty-five thousand? Isn't the line usage two hundred and sixty-five thousand? The balance, the balance in the line usage. I had it. I can't remember where I put it.
Two hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-seven thousand.
Line usage. Thank you. Two hundred and fifty-six thousand fifty-nine dollars.
Somebody was paying attention.
That's minus money that we are raising to come out this month. Minus money to give out. So it's about Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. You all right? Any other questions?
Just going to make a motion to
Okay.
Nope.
Yeah, I have a wonderful pendulum. Those are some Donald Gregory, fourteen twenty-eight Graham Avenue. That five hundred thousand dollar debt service, what was that on? Was that on the bond or was that on the pendulum?
They may even pay that's continuous.
No, he's asking, I'm sure there's reports. City current real estate taxes. So that five hundred K, I think you misspoke. That's your So I'm going to put this on the website tonight for everybody to see. This is, so see, it was actually, this is budgeted amounts. We put in budget. So they have the numbers.
Okay. I noticed Pendott out here that threw his whole most of their equipment out. I know they've left town for a while. I agree with Ernie. I don't mutter anything. Oh, Mr. Orzachowski, Tony there, that we can't control what they do. However, sidewalks, when they came through and started replacing these sidewalks, they seemed to pick and choose which ones they had to replace. The ones that are tiled, why weren't they replaced?
Spoke to Pendott about it. I went out and asked Lenny Kavitsa and Pendott to answer that question. My question was, why did you pick and choose? And then why didn't you just knock it all out completely, reuse it completely, all brand new? What was the problem? Jackhammer and whatever? Why couldn't you bust out the rest? Their answer was they didn't have to do sidewalks. It was at their discretion. The only thing they had to do was the sidewalks near or the handicap ramps and things of that work. But they did not, if they didn't feel it needed it, they weren't doing it. And quite frankly, I was told it was lucky, we're lucky we got what we got.
Well, that may all be true, and I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is. However, I jumped someone else about that. And I was told back in March two thousand eighteen, the city was approached by Morgan about replacing those sidewalks. Were any of you informed about that?
That's not true.
That's not true?
It's not true. It's a rumor. It's not anywhere close to it. They didn't talk to any of us. I've talked to Morgan. Some, he brought it up to me. He says, what's going on about this one day? This was about a month or two ago because he called me on Sunday morning in our house. He goes, what's going on? I hear you're complaining about me. You were in City Hall last week complaining. I'm not in Menneson at all during the day. I'm at work. So I don't know where these rumors, but this place, not City Hall, but Menneson is a virtual hotbed for rumors. The people just, you're going to find out, Ron, that people will pitch you places
That's a Maun Valley thing.
I don't know that. I'm not
It's a Mon Valley thing.
Okay.
Well, anyhow, I did go after someone, and the individual told me he was going to get me an email, which he never did, it was supposed to be received.
I also heard a rumor that I was walking up and down the streets with Morgan, saying, you can do that one, you can do that one, don't do this one. It's a miracle to me.
That was rather arbitrary, if you want to...
It was very arbitrary for me, but I told him, matter of fact, I was there, I was calling Pendott, like I said, bitching why they weren't doing all of them. Ripping them off completely, doing them all, what with the random, looks like hell.
Oh, it does, I mean, you had the opportunity, you're going to have a nice road surface going through there, and then sidewalks are going to look like that.
Exactly, we asked that question.
Just not, just not well thought out whoever came up with that policy. But anyhow, I was just wondering about that, because like I said, someone was supposed to be getting me an email, they haven't, and it's supposedly, well...
It's been months?
Pardon me?
It's been months?
No, actually, it's been three weeks since I talked to the guy from Pendott. And I do call Pendott, and they do return my calls, I'm not sure why they're not returning your calls.
Probably because I pitched Mr. Kavitsa about what's going on here, this isn't acceptable.
And Ernie, I did get those numbers from the city about line usage fee. Apparently, there's been another payment to the city, so I don't have those numbers, but the city in the last three years received one point two million dollars.
One point two million dollars?
Yeah.
Don't worry about it, because you know why?
You're like, what?
You're not, wait, listen to me.
Less than nine dollars.
Listen to me. Come to the meeting next month, when the auditors do the recording, everything will be explained to you.
Oh, come on, you gave to buy me lunch.
I'm not going to buy you lunch.
You're going to owe me lunch.
Don will buy you lunch.
Yeah, I'll buy you lunch. You were saying that motions accept a visit in a sensitive, called in for, was from the county?
Yes, the county unsold, unclaimed repository. For whatever reason, they changed the process, these properties are still, they went through the tax sale, they're still up there, unclaimed. So that amount was probably a portion of the taxes or municipal leaves or whatever is on that property. It's not a city-owned property.
But the city's going to receive the money?
The city would receive a portion of the tax dollars if they were...
They're going to receive a thirteen hundred dollars? Just a portion of that?
So if there's two hundred dollars owed to the city, the city would get that, if there's taxes owed for the city taxes, of course.
The code enforcement assistant, what in particular is he being hired for, or she?
Just Margaret, Margaret's a part-time now.
So you're going to have two part-timers working. Something else I wanted to ask you about. When you go through this, and anything that where it doesn't say where it's coming from, that's just a general fund? What if you're making most of the...
Yes, sorry about that. Generally, I try to tell you exactly where, but occasionally after that, sorry, but it would probably be the general, if you have one in particular, we...
No, I'm just asking, because there's some there that says from capital improvements fund, line usage fund, community, some of the other ones, and then it says motion to approve the payment to Nova, there was nothing...
No, that's general fund, that's what...
That's general fund, motions to prove, for software assistance, that's a general fund.
General fund, right, correct.
That's just my information.
They're not projects, yeah, they're not projects, not...
But if I do get that email from that guy from Pendott, I am going to bring it to council.
Send us a copy.
Pardon me?
Send us a copy.
Oh, yeah.
You got my number, yeah?
I will. But, you know, there's no guarantee, because this could be like Dee was saying, just a rumor. I apologize for my voice, I'm getting over some kind of summer cold.
When was this email sent, allegedly?
March, March two thousand eighteen.
It was sent directly to me?
No, it was not sent to you. It was sent to someone else, and what I see here, I'm going to ask him twice. But I...
How about May of eighteen?
Pardon me?
How about May of eighteen? Was it May?
All right, that's just for me, thank you.
Just got one other. This thing with Jamie Fulton, or whatever he was... They got thirty-six thousand, now we're giving them thirteen thousand. And I know that the contractual obligation was up to ninety thousand, is that what you got to pay?
No, 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 wait, ten grand from the city, ninety from the state.
Oh, okay.
Okay, which is, I even wrote that down.
Okay, but why did you say thirteen thousand?
That's a payment, we pay them as...
They still get paid in increments, because the state gave us the amount, see? I even wrote this, paid by state, that's soon, I heard you, I heard you, whatever, we were at it, that's why I wrote it down.
Okay, I just want to make one little comment about that, because that group has only given us like theoretical composition, what other towns and cities have done. They're not really hitting the nail on the head, what the jury made, Mennesha should back up.
That's their goal.
And I know, but to me, that's a waste of money, because they're not really coming up with a plan to make it work.
I think they're going, after next one, Tony, I think they're going to really narrow it, start to begin it, really narrow it down.
I'm going to be there Wednesday, you want to be there?
Next Wednesday?
Yeah.
On the Sabbath, I think, or something, yes. Yes, we're going to be there, but that's when they're going to really start to narrow things down, okay?
Now, keep one thing in mind, without that comprehensive plan, Mennesha would get zero in the state.
The state mandated, we have to have a new government plan.
Okay, it's too academic.
That's actually why, that's actually why we suffered for four years before you guys. Because they've said it all along, no comprehensive plan, you get nothing.
Right, that's right.
That's why the five hundred thousand went to Eisenberg's and not the city, because nothing. That's why the two hundred and fifty thousand in down payment and closing assistance went to Mon Valley Initiative, M C D C instead of the city.
Which is why, I don't understand why it wasn't done already, because look how easy it was, we contacted the state, the state gave us ninety percent of the money. I mean, why couldn't it have been done four years ago?
We could have used that to put some potholes up.
Well, we could have been already into the part of the state giving us that money, because we had the, you know, we're still playing catch-up.
Tony, you're going to close the meeting?
Are you done? Is there any more comments, please?
Ernie's done, he wants the meeting to be done.
Ernie's buying dinner, so we're...
That's what I heard!
There won't be an executive session, and I'd like to have a motion...
Five thousand, you could buy everybody.
I'd like to have a motion to... Motion to adjourn, please? I forget what to say.
Hi.
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry, it was like way under your last... We done?